All right, we want to welcome everyone to tonight's Board of Education meeting for Cedar Rapids Community School District. Welcome. It's Monday, October 23rd, 2017. With that, we'll call the meeting to order. We'd like to have a motion to approve the revised agenda. Would somebody like to make that motion?
Yes, I move that the agenda of Monday, October 23rd, 2017 Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
A second?
Second.
Great, and this is a roll call vote.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Borcherdean?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Janson?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll turn it over to Dr. Buck for the superintendent's report.
Yeah, great, thank you. So Johnson's Team Academy is one of 25 schools the American Association of School Administrators has chosen who have demonstrated success in student outcomes. This study will identify and highlight the many ways in which Johnson and the other chosen schools and districts are putting students first with unique approaches that expand and support student learning and achievement. We're very proud of Johnson's Team Academy has been chosen for this opportunity. And also, if you follow along on our social media in particular, we have featured schools each week and Johnson's Team Academy is our featured school this week. Friday was America Reads, so we had hundreds of people in our schools reading to our students on Friday. I had the privilege of reading at Grant, Grantwood, and Erskine. And I would have to tell you, I had a chance to read Pete the Cat Boogie Cat, which is like hot off the presses, and the kids thought that was pretty cool. The, I did start out by saying to kids, "Do you guys know what a boogie is?" Like, do you guys know? But, "Oh yeah, we know what boogying is." And then at the end of the book, there's actually the boogie. So you slide right, clap, slide left, clap, shake your rump, kind of thing. So, yeah, it was a good time had by all, honestly. So, at least the second graders at Erskine. So...
Then you did the stance with them.
I did, I did, yeah, yeah. So, although when the video cameras came out, you probably noticed that my boogying got less pronounced, I suppose. And just by way of reminder, the facilities master plan committee is preparing for the upcoming public input sessions, which are scheduled for November 6th, 8th, and 9th. And the locations and times are displayed on the screen, and they're being communicated via our social media platform. And the upcoming meetings are the last of the public input sessions, which we've held throughout the year. Each session will begin with a brief presentation of the committee's work so far. We'll go from there. And just a clarification, the committee intends to present at the December board meeting, and then likely action would occur at the second board meeting in January, which I think is the 20th?
Second.
Second, yeah. So that timeline has been altered just a bit. And one other note, you have a book beside you, or John does, yeah, so Marzano's High Reliability Schools. So, as you know, we have strategic, we have five focus areas in our strategic plan this year. We believe the high reliability schools framework is going to be part of our strategy and tactics that delivers especially on Focus Area 3 related to student learning outcomes, but also intercultural development. So, we offer those books to you now, and we will have a follow-up session, work session, I can't remember, I think it's in January, okay, in January, to further steep you in this understanding about the high reliability schools. So.
Awesome, Dr. Buck. And just on the facilities issue, the website is updated at this point.
Yeah.
So, lots of information out there through this process and the agendas moving forward. So, and the board, the board members are, I think, at least planning to attend some of the forums, so we're looking forward to learning along the way as well during those. So, at this time, are there any board reports or comments? Mary?
I had the privilege and opportunity today to attend, I'm a member of the Downtown Rotary Group, and we had a breakout session, which means different employers around the city offer to have a meeting at their facility. And I went to McKinley Middle School with about 10 other community members, and just had a great presentation by the principal, the assistant principal, and two teachers. And the comments were just really, I think, very favorable about what we're doing at McKinley, and it was fun to listen to. And they announced that there'll be a STEAM middle school next year, 19, 2019?
1920, is that right, 1920?
1919.
Yeah.
Yeah, two falls out, right.
Okay.
Twenty, twenty.
I'm very excited about doing that.
So, it was really fun. We should be proud.
I am not quite as sharp on the, it's, yes.
So, that was...
You meant the 1920 school year.
2020?
Yeah.
2020?
It is 21 cell. I don't...
220, 221, whatever it takes.
We have a 1920 school year.
Very good. So FY20, FY21.
Wow, that was good.
That's good.
So, I just wanted to share that with the group.
That's great, that's awesome news. Other board reports or comments? Jennifer?
Yeah, as a new board member, I was able to go and tour with Buildings and Grounds with John, I'm probably not going to say your last name correctly, and I apologize in advance, Galbraith, and was able to meet a lot of employees of Buildings and Grounds. It was just a really, really great division of our organization. Everybody's really fantastic, really friendly, very knowledgeable, and that was just a real pleasure.
Great, thanks, Jennifer. Gary?
Last week, Jennifer, myself, and Linda attended IASB's Employee Relations Conference in Des Moines. A long day, lots of information, lots of information that we'll share as the year goes on. But, good conference, good information.
Awesome. Nancy?
I had an opportunity to read at Grant School on Friday to a fourth and fifth grade blended class. You know, then when I was reading, I could see people surrounding me because they wanted to see if that was my real hair on my head.
You totally, "Don't touch the hair," right?
Right. But they were very attentive when I walked through the door. I was greeted and said, "Are you one of our readers?" So I really had a great, great time reading.
Great. Any other board reports? I just want to mention to the rest of the board that Jennifer and I will attend the IASB New Board Member Orientation on Wednesday night down at Clear Creek, Amana, so that'll be good, always good sessions that they put on. And then, the board has been practicing very hard for Lip Sync for Learning, which happens on November 17th, so the other teams better watch out. Choreography is coming along, it's amazing. So I'm just putting that out there, they better, they better be ready. So...
Thanks, Jen.
Anyway, we're having a good time. Yeah. So it'll be fun. And hopefully, everybody will come out and support the Cedar Rapids Community School District Foundation for this great fundraiser for our kids. So, all right. Next, we have communications, delegations, and petitions, but nobody's asked to speak before the board tonight, so we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. And with that, are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to pull for further comments or questions?
Oh, I wrote mine. Yes. If you could pull BA 18167 and have a separate vote, because I'm a board member for ASAC.
Okay. Any other items to pull, questions or comments? All right. So seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as written minus the BA 18167? Is there a second? Great, and this is a roll call vote.
Director Meisterling?
Aye.
Director Borcherdean?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Janson?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
President Laberty?
Aye. And with that, then we'll have the vote on BA 18167, the agreement with ASAC for Title I services for the 2017-18...
That could be a voice vote.
...school year. And, okay, great, so a voice vote. All of those in favor of that agreement signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Nancy abstains?
I abstain.
Great, and the motion passes. Terrific. Next, we'll move into our work session, and we're very excited about this. A lot of us have been working for many, many years to get this up and going. And with that, we'll turn it over to you, Noreen.
Great. Well, thank you, President Laberty and board members, for having us tonight. Our new data analytics team, our department is really excited to present tonight. So, but I have to say, this department wouldn't be here without your vision. So thanks for your commitment to being a data-driven environment. So, without any further ado, we're going to jump right in to what we hope will be some outcomes for you tonight as board members, as learners of this work session. We have two outcomes that are really about reviewing where we've been so far. So the department started in July, and here we are at the end of October, so we want to give you some updates about processes and procedures for the department, but secondly, giving you an idea of some of the reports and work that the department has been doing. We also have a little bit of learning for you. We're going to chunk and chew just a little bit of sample data so that you can see the type of work we're doing for the schools. And then finally, we're seeking your feedback as we move forward. We've created a backwards map plan from August of next year to the present, and we're very open to your feedback for that. So, if the alignment to your goals and learning goals are the two of visionary work as well as the, your student learning outcomes. And I get to drive the ship, I think is what Justin is saying. Thanks, Justin. So, visionary governance and student learning, of course, the visionary governance of being a data-driven environment, but then also, student learning is the essence of what we want to use our data for. But in regards to our strategic plan, I would say all of these can be data-connected, but we really want to hit heavy on the learning and the intercultural mindset work and how we're using data for those particular strategic plan focus areas. So, data mining, if you haven't heard the term, is about doing exactly that, digging for the data, finding the data, and then organizing the data. And we have been doing some mining. I told our data analysts when they came in, I said, "We're kind of archaeologists, we're all new to the system, and so we're going to dig and find where it is and then try to create some order to that." If you look at the Rubik's Cube that says chaos, I wouldn't say that we have a system of chaos, but we definitely have a system of isolation. And so each one of those cubes would represent either a department or a school. They know where they are, they know what, where they belong in the cube, or where they currently are in the cube, but they're not in alignment and working as a system together. So we're trying to create order through data mining. And so, what we're going to start with is the first learning outcome of the four for this work session, which is reviewing the fruits of the labor of our team. So I'd like you to meet Matthew Kempf and Angela Bilman, who'll come up here with me. And we affectionately, so now you get to practice your jazz hands. This is, get, yeah, come on, there we go, yeah! So, we like to affectionately call them Mangela. So you can say that with me? This is Mangela! So, we are very excited for our data analysts. And so, the picture here...
This was the first.
Come on!
I'm reading a boogie cat, whatever.
This is so exciting. But the, so, yeah, you can see the little cartoon images on the screen kind of represent Mangela. Although they don't hold hands at work, you usually see them together. And they really are doing two things. One, the fruits of their labor are producing and finding information and organizing that for our teams. So, in July, they just beat the heat and really built relationships within this building, within every building, reaching out to our principals. And they were a hot commodity right out of the gate, and people really were like, "So glad you're here, and here's a job I need you to do." And so, that was a lot of the work within July. August, they really got more into the auditing. So it was kind of a rat race there in July in figuring things out and establishing those relationships. But in August, they had the opportunity to really audit the system. So, Power School is one of our systems, but we have data living in lots of places. So finding where all that data was living, and they tried to synthesize where those locations were. And then really, most recent September and October was producing work and developing systems, working systems to support our schools and our kids. So most recently, they've created data dashboards that we're using in the Office of Learning and Leadership. For example, I lead the high school teams, I'll be using those dashboards this Thursday with Mangela's help. We'll be looking at the data dashboards for our high schools and how that information will help drive our system. So this will become kind of an ordinary part of our work all of the time, not once in, once in a while. So, without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Matt and Angela, who are going to lead us through the next couple of outcomes.
Starburst hands. I want to echo Noreen's comments. Thank you so much for having us here today, and thank you for your belief in the vision that data is important and can drive good decisions. As Noreen mentioned, what we're going to do is dive into that first work session piece, which is, what are some of the projects that we've been getting our hands dirty with? So the way that our projects come to us is in an ad hoc fashion. So, most of the times, we are receiving requests from people at principals at schools, administrators here at the ELSC. And a lot of those requests require us to go into a deep dive into our data systems, whether they are our student information system, or we have to reach outside of the student information system and compile data across different systems. So we're really exploring, and like Noreen said, we're very much archaeologists. So, some of the first types of projects that we have been working on are projects that we can align with the strategic plan of the district. This is very crucial to us, so anytime we get those ad hoc requests in, we try to categorize them into something that goes with the strategic plan. So that's what you'll see up here on the board. So obviously, the first piece of our future, our strategic plan is having a future-ready story. What does it mean to have a future-ready story? Well, you have to understand where you are currently in order to know where you're going. And how do you know where you are currently, but ask those crucial questions. What do our students look like now, and all of the important factors when it, when it comes to behavior, office referrals? How long are our students spending in the classroom? How long are they outside of the classroom? These are all recorded in our student information system as well as our behavior management system, and we can pull that information out and determine what kinds of things are going on with our kids. So we see longitudinal studies on student attendance, office referrals, suspensions. We're trying to track student mobility, see how that affects student outcomes. We also do a lot of work with our partnership agencies, whether it's United Way of East Central Iowa or the University of Iowa when we're participating in different studies. So what we do is we try to compile new and interesting information on our students so that we're not always, we're not always grabbing the same students for different studies. What types of risk factors can we look at that might grab a different population of students that need additional assistance? So that's just a few of the future-ready stories. Now I turn it over to the Matt.
Well, thank you, Angela, I appreciate it. And I just want to say that I agree with them both, that it has been a wonderful experience to come here to Cedar Rapids School, so thank you for your vision. One of the things that I think is really important as a technical person is that we need to be able to get these systems to talk to each other. If we can't get these systems to talk, you can't complete the technological story to even understand how do you help these kids. One of the things that we've been focused on most recently is also about the future-ready workforce. You know, how do we get children to their future that they have chosen for themselves? And one of the ways that we've started doing that is using technology to do things like creating reports that people can actually run on their own, that hopefully they don't need us. That would be the ideal, that they can access any data they need at any time for any reason. We also wanted to make sure that we've automated some of these district spreadsheets. One of the things that we've actually encountered is that on one of our projects that took us an hour, it saved approximately 425 to 450 hours of IDS time that would have been used there at the schools that they can now reallocate to those students. We've also been doing, visiting schools and then facilitating those conversations. You know, one of the things that's kind of come up here that Noreen mentioned is that we have some efficiency issues, but they're all easily solvable. I mean, mostly I make Angela do it, but... Yeah. But I do think it's definitely possible. There are some new things coming up on the horizon technologically, like some Power School additions or modifications, that I think will really set us up for the next three to five years and get students where they need to be. But, most importantly, we've also been doing some data audits. Some of these audits that we've been doing have been uncovering some problems, like dirty data, data issues that maybe they haven't always been put in consistently, some haven't been put in five years, you know. But, that's been great, because Angela and I are actually going to focus on creating a course to help instruct people. So, on to the next one, right? Perfect.
All right. So on next in our strategic plan, we have future-ready learning. What does the future mean for our children? That's, that's the biggest question. That's the question we're all here for in designing our night around. That means whatever, whatever the future holds for that child, whether that means college, whether that means some other, something other than college, it, whatever we are trying to prepare the students for, we need to make sure that we start looking at that information now to see if we are getting them ready for that future. So some key areas that we've been looking into are reading and literacy. I mean, the, we have ample data with regards to reading and literacy, with regards to FAST data, which comes in, we just got our first round of FAST data in. So we've been really eagerly getting our hands on that and trying to get the data in front of the teachers so that they can start making informed decisions for their children in how they teach and instruct going forward through the rest of the school year. We also have been looking a lot at alternative education. So, how can we make sure that the students that are not in our general education schools are going to be completing these courses, completing their, their studies? We want to make sure that we get them through to graduation. We get them literate. We make sure that they have a, have everything that they need to be ready for the future. So, we've been taking pretty deep dive into some of our alternative education centers to see what those kinds of students look like and what their special needs are. We've also been looking at AP enrollment. How can we encourage students to be more engaged in AP courses? Whether they are going to college or not, it is important for them to be able to feel invited into these courses and to feel, feel like they are a part of that community. So, we've been looking at who is currently involved in AP classes, what is performance and success rate for these different types of demographics of students that are involved in AP courses, and how do we encourage them to become more a part of them?
All righty. So, one of the things we also wanted to cover was the intercultural mindset. You know, here in America, it's really great that you can come from pretty much anywhere and hopefully go anywhere and do anything that you want to, but none of that's free. That all requires some work on other people's part to make sure that they take the steps necessary to help those children reach their maximum potential. One of the ways that we've been doing that is we've actually been doing some analysis lately by compiling that demographic data. Who are our ELL students? Who are our special needs students? How many students have come from out of the country or even from across the state? You know, what kind of, what kind of story do they have so that we can hopefully better understand them, so that we can hopefully reach out to those students and help them? Part of that we've also been doing is by creating snapshots. You know, there have been some projects where we've actually been looking at specific personas that are hopefully going to inform decision-making regarding race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, those things that can have a profound effect on students, especially the environment that they find themselves in. But also, how can we actually identify how to help them in the most effective way, and where are they? But more importantly, we also want to do a lot of longitudinal data. Dr. Buck has been asking us to collect some information about what has been happening over the last five years here in the district. You know, one of the things that we've been focusing on is, have they been coming into the district? Have they been leaving the district? Well, it kind of depends. Actually, about 50% of them stay in the district, and then a lot of them have been coming from overseas. So, by having that information, I think that honestly, we're positioning ourselves for the next three to five years to hopefully arrange our resources so that we can better help kids.
All right, and finally, we're going to talk about how we, as a department, can be future-ready. That, if we're asking this of our children, we have to be ready ourselves. So what is it we can do, Matt, Angela, Noreen, and us as a department, what can we do to make ourselves ready for that future? So, as, as we've mentioned before, the things that are happening right now are that we need to get our data clean. You know, we can't put anything in front of you until we know what we're looking at and we know that we can trust that it is accurate. So, uncovering that, what Matt had loving, lovingly referred to as possibly less than perfectly clean data, identifying it, scrubbing it, understanding how we can input it in a better way so that when we get it out, it gives you the information you need to make those informed decisions. So that is crucial for us, that, that's the initial step that we have got to get done this year. That is first. Next then, we can start to look at the bigger picture. We grow up from there. We want to make a, we want to make sure that our systems all talk to each other. So right now, we have data stored in a bajillion places. That's approximately. I rounded up a little. But, but having these systems all speak to each other is really important. We have our students over here, but our students are not independent of our teachers, which are also not independent of our, like, the actual school buildings that they're in. All of these things work together in a very cohesive way. So we need to have our data speak together in that exact same cohesive way so that you can look at that information and make very informed decisions. So, there, we've stepped a little higher. In that, in that step higher, we also want to put that data in front of teachers, help the teachers understand what is happening on a day-to-day basis so that they can see those high-risk students, they can point them out in the classroom every single day, and they can say, "What steps, what interventions can I perform with these students that I can track, and then I can prove that I'm making progress with these kids moving forward into the future? And what does progress look like, and how do we measure that success?" So these are the kinds of things we're thinking about in that, in that long-range scope, which Noreen's going to talk about here pretty soon.
So, here's a sample of some of the data that we've actually produced. On the left here, you can actually see that we have calculated the total office referrals by IEP or special ed. status, and their grade at Truman. What you can see here is that slightly more than 25 are not special needs, and then somewhere around two to three do have an IEP of some kind. Another one is a sample dashboard, which on the right you can see is the average of, average daily attendance by ethnicity, grade at Garfield Elementary. You'll notice that there's actually a second line because there's, the percentage on the left, which is the actual percentage of students who, and their ADA. So on the left, you can see Native Americans have 100%. However, Hispanic or Latino students only have about 90%. And then the line you'll see on there is actually the number. So even though there's 100% Native American students, there's actually only one. So, this is kind of a sample of what we're producing, pretty regularly, actually. I'd say at least every day, at least one.
Yeah, absolutely. So, what Matt and I try to do is we try to engage in data-driven conversations. Whenever we talk to people, we try to help them, we try to help them ask questions in a way that are measurable so that we can determine whether they are successful in their goals. So, when Matt was talking to you about these dashboards, so these dashboards are really interactive, and we're planning on giving them to every one of the schools so that they can drill down into office referrals, suspensions, attendance information. And what we hope people will gain from this, so at a district level, when we're all looking at this, what we want to be able to do is say, "Which schools are, are really our rock stars? Who's doing well with regards to these hot-button issues, attendance, office referrals? Who's doing poorly? Who's doing well?" These are two very crucial questions. And from these two questions, we can say, "Well, this school is doing great. What are they doing that is causing this data to look this way? What are those interventions?" Once you determine which of those interventions are the effective ones, then you can try to figure out how to implement those in the lower-performing schools in a measurable way so that we can look across time and say, "Yeah, that intervention maybe worked for school A, but perhaps this is not going to work for school B. Maybe they need a different intervention." But we'll be able to determine that because we have tracked success over time in a measurable fashion.
So, some other stuff that we like to make sure that we are doing is actually asking some other questions. You know, one of the things that we usually ask people are, "What do you want to get out of your project?" You know, start with the end in mind. Do you want to get a specific look at what types of students run into office referrals, or which type of students are not coming to school, and potentially why they're not coming to school? But more importantly, it's also about project design, because one of the things that we've seen is that sometimes people just aren't sure what questions to ask. So we make sure that we try to prompt them. But more importantly, we also try to see how we can get them to measure these goals. One of the things that we came into was that sometimes people were overwhelmed. One of the things that we came into was that sometimes people were overwhelmed by looking at these spreadsheets or other information. You know, they could be 40 pages long. They didn't know what to do with it. So how do you measure things in a concise way so that you can actually turn that into actionable items? That's really important for us. But more importantly, how are you going to actually determine what is successful or failure? You know, in a perfect world, everything that we do would be perfect and awesome. It would all work, but it doesn't. But how are you going to measure that? Because once you can find out what's not working, you can find out what you can do to help make an improvement in those children's lives. And then finally, what are you going to do with it? Are you just going to share it with people? Are you going to turn it into an action item where you say, you know, Truman over here is doing really well in this area. What are they doing? Can you move that over to another school and hopefully help them out? Well, hopefully, that's a possibility. Noreen?
So essentially, thank you both. They've been doing a lot of work all over the place and really organizing ourselves. And so some of our systems that perhaps we'd hoped would work for us, with their expertise and being able to do the data mining, we've had to adjust several times of what we thought was going to work may not work. But now we have a better lens on the back end of what we will need as for our system to move forward. So really, we're hopeful to get some feedback from you all tonight and maybe just what you see as opportunities for success for what's happened so far or opportunities, what I like to call the OFIs, opportunities for improvement as well. So we have created a backwards map, and I won't get into the details of this, but the product that we had purchased a year ago for our system wasn't marrying well. From, as they were talking about organizing and having systems talk to each other, it just wouldn't talk very well. And so we weren't getting accurate data displays for our schools and our teachers, and bad data means bad decisions, and we don't want inaccuracies. We have an opportunity that we didn't know existed right within our student information system. That is a different product. Power School has a new data analytics system that can live right within our student information system, that can produce data dashboards daily for our teachers based on the data that they input in Power School. That is a new product, and it's a new opportunity for us. So we, these two, have really dug in deep about what that could provide, and I'm trusting, you know, their recommendations too, but we've put it in front of about 40 people within our organization. And we feel jazzy about the new opportunity with Power School and living within our system. So then we create a one-stop shop for children, for parents, and for our teachers, that it would all live together to make decisions every day for kids. So we are going to dig in deeper to that opportunity and a backwards map to what that could look like as we move forward. So it really would be a replacement of the other product, which was called School Status, which just was having a hard time syncing in with the rest of our systems. So that would be our hope as we move forward. And so in the meantime, we have data dashboards so that every school can make decisions, but this would be an automated way, that it would be in front of teachers, data in today, data out today, right in front of them.
And Noreen, that's down to the student level? So if a teacher wants to dive down into a student...
It has the coolest profiles. Like literally, you can click on your kid. It shows all of the data right there from a teacher level. If the student's in my class, I can see everything. So really amazing product that they've advanced and is now an opportunity that wasn't an opportunity in recent years. We are very open to feedback and questions.
Yeah, I have a question about, so I think, oh, good job. And I think that when you talked about doing a longitudinal study and then you had referenced office referrals, for example, and you'd used words like dirty data and maybe not-so-clean data, I'm going to call it slippery data because I think that what I'm concerned about and what I'm focused on here, my question is around office referrals, you're dealing with humans, and you know, so you're going to have different categories that are going to get you to a different office referral, depending on teacher, depending on school. So if you're trying to compare data from school to school and they have a different escalation for an office referral, how are you going to justify that? Is the dashboard that you're talking about, is that going to provide like a standard for an office referral?
There does need to be standardized practice of data entry, but you're right, there's supplemental opportunity to provide additional comments and information that is more about the child. But when we are coding, Matt uses a great example. We had attendance codes, a plethora of attendance codes, and what one school was calling leave early, they coded as LE. Another school had legal exempt, was their LE. So when you're pulling data, LEs, you could have a lot of LEs, but they meant completely different things. So that's very true when we're looking at what's behind behavior and to support children's progress. Their behavior plans are the essence of the instruction, but how we code the incident needs to be in alignment so that we know what we're talking about. And so that's the work of OLL. We're working with our administrators to define those codes so that we make sure at the school level, the entry is correct. They are creating a Canvas course for anyone who would enter data at the school level for attendance and discipline specifically. This is how we will code things. And if we all made up our own codes, we'll never have accurate system-wide data. So it isn't, the most important thing is at the school level, they know the child. But from a system level, we want that clean data. That's a great question.
And one of the things that happened this year, our Culture Climate Transformation Team recognized this very issue. So they have gotten very specific about how we define different behaviors, and they provided staff with training on the use of those tools and the types of behaviors they expect to see so that we can get additional clarity on that very thing you're describing. So it's underway. Yeah.
It is.
Kristen?
Given the varying technical specifications for use in Power School, sorry, is, this is really going to become your baseline year then, correct? Because you're going to have to re-baseline.
So we'll re-norm it.
But essentially, you're going to have to.
You're right.
Because if we can't baseline the original...
But I would say that ultimately, what have been our standardized, what we want, of course, is all children learning at high levels. So our standardized assessments that we've been using over time, that is data that won't change because we'll be using the same assessment. So our hope would be that if we align our data internally and really get at that data that's going to drive practice every day, you're right, some of this will be a baseline year for us in regards to making sure that we're all calling it the same thing, but we're also doing our professional learning in alignment too, exactly what Dr. Buck just highlighted. So yes, there will be some comparisons that will be maybe more of a contrast from what data was and what we called office referrals or attendance in the past. But I would still go back to you have excused absences and unexcused absences.
Right. So are you taking the time, I guess, Mangela, are you taking the time to go back and crosswalk and matrix the data so that where possible...
Drill down or drill up?
Yeah. So that you can normalize it as much as possible? Okay, and then, they're nodding.
Yeah, they're nodding, yeah.
They're nodding at me.
Yes. At this current point, what we're trying to do is leave the data exactly as it is in the system so that everyone can see the state that we are in today. And when they look at it, they'll be like, well, excused means the same as capital E excused, which means the same as all capital letters excused. It's just a matter of how you're inputting it into the system. So show it to them as it is, and then, as Noreen was saying, create that rule on how to input it so that it looks the same when it comes out. So those crosswalks will exist, and they do exist. We are just not currently utilizing them because we want to make sure that everybody understands current state. Yep, good question.
Okay.
There are related sort of tangential pieces of that.
So one of them is aggregations in our data demonstrate areas of need currently. So we oversuspend racially and ethically diverse kids. I mean, you've heard the list of things. Those, regardless of baseline resetting, are still sort of general themes that we want to look for in the trends in the data because they have existed. And one of the other related important issues here is people would give our district assessment on a six-week-ish cycle, I'm probably not exactly right, and they would put that into a spreadsheet. They'd put all that together. The spreadsheets would come to the ELSC. The ELSC would take all of the spreadsheets, aggregate those spreadsheets, and then those data would be available for teachers to try to make instructional decisions about what's happening, all weeks lagged and delayed. So what we're talking about now is those same assessments can happen in the classroom. They load them same day, next day, kind of a thing, and they are available in real time to make different instructional decisions. So yes, the baseline is an important piece of this, and at the same time, we will have access to helpful information more quickly. I mean, it's going to go...
And the baselining was more of a question as, less for the teachers, I think more as outside bodies look at it and see it, not understanding that maybe it hasn't been normalized yet and it hasn't been crosswalked. Because ultimately, what we want is frontline staff to be able to do what we need, but we will be interpreted and analyzed by other people and just so that they're aware that it took some normalizing. My second part of my question is, then, given this one-stop shopping with Power School, will there be metrics and such for teachers? Because it's not always universally used by teachers. And so is this an opportunity as well to get that data in there in a way?
Yeah, so our common assessments in literacy and math, I think especially our secondary teachers or maybe heavier users of data entry in the grade book, so to speak, in Power School, and our elementaries have really depended on a lot of data notebooks and things that they use within practice in their classroom, and then they do more of that grade reporting at the report card time. So we will be looking to use the assessment tool in Power School to enter, at least to start with our, to train our elementary teachers to enter that data in Power School aligned to the standards. Right now, they're doing that in spreadsheets, and they're not doing it in the student information system. So our goal will be, with all the priority standards, the data will follow the child year to year, and parents will also have access to that, K through 12.
Form follows function.
Form follows function.
Yeah, and one of the issues here, to sort of amplify that, algebra, for example, is a terribly important course to pass in your freshman year if you're in freshman algebra. Because if you don't pass algebra and you don't pass ninth-grade English, your chances of graduating drop off precipitously. So what we'll have in this instance is real-time access to which students are not currently passing. So it will become even more incumbent on our staff to make sure that's as updated as possible because we'll have real-time dynamic information on how kids are progressing.
Not that names completely matter, but the name of the product is called Unified Classroom, which truly means a unify of all data to each student.
I just wanted to say thank you because I think it's so important with the data that's made major decisions, and you guys are doing a great, great job putting this all together. And I know this is something that we have wanted for a while, so I thank you, and you, Dr. Buck, too, for, maybe you really did do any... But it is important, the work you're doing, and it is appreciated.
Gary, and then Jennifer.
Well, it's pretty evident we did some great hires. Appreciate it.
I know it, totally! Well, I hired them, so thanks.
Every time we hear how great Matt and Angela are, Noreen says, and you know who hired them? Yes, we know who hired them.
I saw the vision.
It's noted, Noreen. In particular, the comment about the fact that as we're analyzing where we had, what we had, and looked like we had a tool that was not going to, would be very easy for a large institution to hide behind that decision that we made and kind of put forward to say, well, but we have the product and this is what we're going to do. I truly appreciate the integrity that what's more important is the fact that garbage in, garbage out, and so that we're moving ahead with the right project. And the fact that, again, we have the right people, we're able to research the tool that we had, to be able to find that we're able to find something.
Their skill sets are so tremendous, and we're really able to help in that July-August period to audit what we had, so absolutely.
A couple of things, I can't leave a discussion about data analysis without the fact that we are in the midst of having some kind of a new statewide testing system that will have a great impact on what we, how we look at student performance and so on as we move forward. So on some of that, it may be treading water, but there certainly is enough other areas, the attendance area and some of the other things that certainly are not impacted by that. And then the third thing is that I know we've made it a priority from, as this board, that we have multiple ways of success for all students. And so ways that we can be able to identify, are we really meeting the needs? Are we finding those avenues and giving those different avenues of success to students? Are students really given the information, the data, and are they moving in directions that would demonstrate that?
I appreciate you saying that, and that surfaced as most recently as last Wednesday with our technology committee meeting and making sure that we have not just some data, but many opportunities for students to be able to access the future readiness. And so we can also audit now how many of our students are taking dual-credit courses and looking at that through an equity lens as well. And then KNAB, which is the product that we've purchased as a district, also has a data system that is now living over here, but we hope to integrate with the rest of this work that we're doing. So Matt described it really well, making a unified system, and the systems can talk to each other for kids, and that it's in front of them, and they can make those decisions for themselves too.
Jennifer?
So I just want to see if I am understanding something correctly. So it seems like with a unified system and then unified data entry codings and stuff, are we developing common language? Shared language?
Yes, shared language, yes, yes. Again, form follows function. And so, yes, the hope that we can have alignment within our system of how do we, what do we describe as proficiency? What does proficiency mean? And outcomes for all kids and a body of evidence to certify standards, getting to Gary's point, we certainly will have a different state assessment, but we know our curriculum and our standards and what drives the practice every day for kids with teachers.
Noreen, be sure, be sure when you get that glossary put together that we get a copy of it.
You betcha. You betcha Matt and Angela created Canvas, of course, for you.
A couple of things. So I'm excited that we're adding some things. So you've developed a system that took, what, one hour for entry to get rid of 400 hours of entry so that those staff now can really do more to help kids with instruction and learning? So that's huge. We've been trying to get the system in place too so that as board members, when we have all of these different groups coming and doing contracts and we're agreeing to money because of this is the set outcome, now we can actually hopefully say, okay, this is working. Over a period of time, our investment has a significant return on that investment. So that's, I think, really important to us. The other thing that I'm hoping, from where I sit, is maybe in the late spring, early next year sometime, we'll be able to get some of those end-users. So we'll be able to get some of the parents, some of the teachers in the classrooms in front of the board. What you guys are doing now, introducing us to all this, is amazing. Thank you, thank you, thank you. But we want to hear how those dashboards are helping the teachers in the classroom and those kids and the principals. And I'm also excited because in my line of work, this big data is a huge part of it and the predictive side of it, so not just collecting the data and saying, here's the trends that we're seeing, but being able to say, here's where this is actually leading us to. So if we see kids in real time, potentially, day-to-day sorts of things, saying, these things are all aligning, this kid is potentially in serious trouble here. You know, we've got amazing teachers and principals and counselors and custodians. Everybody's picking up on lots of signals, and sometimes, you know, making sure that all jives together is a real trick, and there's humans involved with that, and there can be human errors involved sometimes. And so kind of having that data piece to help predict and put up the little red flag or...
or the yellow flag, or sometimes the green flag and say, oh, that kid's actually doing pretty good, and there's some others over here that if we just did a little bit more, it might make a huge difference. Sort of reinforces what the teachers are doing in the classrooms, what counselors are doing. So that's sort of one of those visions, I hope, can also be part of that. So anyway, congratulations and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Raphael?
I have one more quick question.
There isn't much more that I can ask that already hasn't been asked. I had to scratch everything off over here, so. And I don't know if maybe Dr. Buck, you would know, or if you guys would know. So how many other districts are doing what, what we're doing? Is it something new? Is it something unique to what we're doing? Are we kind of charting the course that eventually we could serve?
Everyone's super jealous.
That's, that's what I'm hoping, because I envision that we kind of get this started, and at some point, other districts come to us and say, how did you do it? And that makes us better.
The leading charge is really the district that's a little larger than us, is Des Moines, and they have a pretty robust department. But they actually started with defining Common Language using their student information system, finding a data machine that would work with that student information system. So they put in a lot of like nuts and bolts things to get the things moving. I think they would tell you that it takes a while for things to charge forward. We, we have schools that are so hungry for this work that really it's just completely advantageous for us just to take advantage of, you know, the, how hungry they are. They want it in front of them. But I would say it's a rarity for schools to have this opportunity. And we are so, I'm just so grateful for our kids because we'll make better decisions for them because of it.
Okay. All right. Seeing no other questions, we do want to thank you again for all your work, and do keep us updated if there's anything else as a board we can do. So yeah, jazz hands, maybe a little hair flip along the way.
You're all prepared for your listing now, that's...
That doesn't work. Glitter, I don't know. So, all right. Well, that, that is the end of the work session and really the end of the school board meeting. So we do have your calendars there and ask that you leave comments, board members, and with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending tonight.